People are passionate.
Good business.
All right, it is 6:00 PM. I do have one quick announcement before we get started. I do have two members of the Mayor's Youth Council here tonight, Caitlin Bonas there, and Olivia Meacham back there. So, thank you for attending tonight. First item up tonight is the Park and Recreation Annual Report. So, I'm assuming that would be Mr. Doug.
Senator and Council, I'm Doug Bylin, Chief of Culture and Recreation. Get started. The Parks and Recreation Annual Report, you should have a copy of the report in your packet. But just some highlights here of this year, and this is the fiscal year '25, so ended in July. And we did have 3,200, just over 3,200 program registrations. Just highlight that 47% of those were youth programs, 28% are family, 15% is adult, and then 10% are 50-plus, even though it's kind of adult, right? So, either way, so 25% of our programs are for adults. Just going to throw in some other numbers, which is kind of surprising. Over 1,400 practices, 1,100 of those were competitive youth teams. So, baseball and softball teams would practice all year round, maybe done now probably, but practice a lot during the year. We had 1,270 games, and 758 of those are Parks and Rec programs. So, adult softball, youth softball, T-ball, flag football, those kind of things that we offer, not just the tournaments that we always see on the weekends. We had 522 rentals, so a lot of rentals, and that shelter, the pool, community rooms, tournaments for the ball field and things like that. Attendance at Pickard Sports Complex, we had 88,000 plus, and that's just for the complex itself. I can't even estimate how many other people come to Pickard Park, just in general, to play disc golf or other things. So, but that's tournaments. This fiscal year, we were lucky to get two DGPT events in the fiscal year, because the last one was in July and this one was in June. So, we got two this year. That's kind of interesting. Baseball and softball tournaments, we know, high school cross country, Simpson Cross Country uses cross country courts. And then all of our recreation programs that we talked about. Activity Center, almost 12,000 check-ins, so several hundred day. That includes daily attendance, our events that we have on Tuesdays, concerts and speakers. Also, that does include SHIP and AARP. Nearly 1,100 people use those services that those volunteers do to help with tax help. Or now that we're in the middle of open enrollment for Medicare, this is, there's over 800 people that get SHIP help through those volunteers every year. And then the special events, again, 11,400, we can't, I mean, we can't add all of those up. That's just kind of a conservative number. But all our Friday's Friends programs, there's 46 of those every year. Costume Party, which we just had in October, Flashlight East Train, an indoor playground had over 1,000 kids that came to that just on Wednesdays in the wintertime. So, parks and facilities, I think everybody probably knows, but just in case. We have 15 parks, over 268 acres, we have nine miles of trail. Some of those are hard service and summer mode in Pickard Park and Danowski Park, places like that. Our staff does handle the right-of-way trees along the street. So, if a tree dies or something happens on one of those trees, we remove those. Beautification, obviously, everybody knows Buxton Park. And I think everybody should know Downtown, right? Those are the pretty obvious ones. And even with the Downtown, all the holiday decorations that we're starting to put up right now. We have 88 baskets. There's over 3,600 plants around the square that we helped end up. I know Councilmen's Zones asked about that this morning, about kind of the things we do there. And don't forget the medians along the highway. We just cleaned those up here last week. We take care of those. And then numerous flower beds around the library, the City Hall, other flower beds all around the community. I shouldn't, I didn't put on the report, but don't forget it's no removal, unfortunately. Maybe we won't have that this winter, but we did last year at least. So, that keeps us busy year-round for sure.
Doug, my questions were around those items and how budget changes impacted them. You sent some numbers back, but I don't know how those numbers specifically impact what we're going to do.
Yeah, because this was still fiscal year last year. So, there was about 40 things that we did reduce, and some of those were like we talked about fertilizer, weed spray, some of those things, lowered our number of staff that are working in the summer. So, that affects beautification efforts that we can do in all of those flower beds, all those parks, all those places when it comes to just parks. So, again, there's like 40 things on a list, and I don't want to, I will forget them all if I try to talk about them all now.
Yeah. But the bottom line is, there's going to be an impact to...
In the future.
Yep.
A lot of volunteers this year, though, help with the planting. Is that normal? I mean, a number of people have showed up Saturday.
This spring, we brought staff involved. So, we have done that in the past. I know COVID year, we did that. So, we have done that in the past. We've always had volunteers that will come help. Maybe not as many as we had with all our staff. I know Main Street helped do some mulching and cleaning up things, too. So, we're getting more community involvement for a lot of those things, too.
Right.
Next slide here is talking about recreation. I think, again, these are a lot of things everybody knows, but we have to not forget the Activity Center and all the senior programming in the community that happens there. Pickard Sports Complex, which we talked about. Our staff does handle the Veterans Room where Aquatic Center, even though that's not in this report, but that's a whole nother budget, a whole nother ordinance commission and everybody. We do handle that. All our youth and adult leagues, we have many special events. Again, many rentals, like we talked about, the zone or middle school kids from sixth, eighth, and eighth grade at the middle school. And then Mayor's Youth Council, a couple of them are here, and so we do handle them. If anybody has questions on that, go ahead.
Just clarifying the zone. I know I got a text message from Jamie one time. She had to run out there and do some things. Somebody wasn't quite, it wasn't working quite right, or somebody wasn't there. So, you supply staff to go do that then and help with that, or how does that work?
It's mostly volunteers, but we do get work study through Simpson. So, that's how we would contract through them. And then Jamie is our one staff person that works there all the time.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's just Mondays and Thursdays, October through March each year. So, I always kind of save the best for last, usually in both these reports. But we couldn't do all the things that we do without our staff. We have eight full-time staff, 27 seasonal staff. Again, this is just the recreation side. So, park staff and recreation staff, and then 15 officials. But then 270 volunteers, like you mentioned, and all the coaches, all the people that help plant flowers, all the things that happen in cleanups throughout the community all year long, yoga instructors, you name it. There's a lot of volunteers. We can't do that without them. We are overseen by the Parks and Recreation Commissions, and that's six boards, if you guys know that, through our policies and so on. The community collaboration, we have 36 event partners from the Des Moines Disc Golf Club to, you name it. There's several different community partners that help us with our activities, whether it's teaching something or organizing an event, or we're helping with an event. And then we couldn't do this, again, without support from sponsors. We have 90 businesses, organizations, and individuals that help contribute financially or in kind for Parks and Recreation programs throughout the year. But Pat, I don't know if anybody has any specific questions or anything.
Doug, in the report that we got, that went out with a packet of information, you had, if I remember, if you don't mind me just kind of digging into one thing, or the finances. Net revenue this year, or I believe this pool, was it?
Would not include the Aquatic Center.
Okay. So, there was one that said net revenue here is $34,490, $449, it runs.
That's the Aquatic Center. That's the pool.
That's the pool, so we'll talk about that later. Okay.
This one had a loss, actually, right?
We were like 6,000. I don't remember the exact number.
$6,381.
And we usually have been budgeting more than that, because we've been trying to spend out on the fund reserve that was in the Parks and Rec budget at the time.
And you were kind enough to share some of your money?
It's community money.
Exactly.
Right, no.
Teamwork.
Doug, I think to that point, it would probably be good for you to briefly touch on what percentage of tax revenues make up your budget, as well as fees, and kind of how that compares to the national trends.
Yeah, so we were looking through that today. And this is, again, just Parks and Recreation side, so I don't want to include IWC or the Aquatic Center. So, all of those, and a lot of communities would include all of those things in their, the percent of property tax that goes towards those events and facilities and programs. On the Parks and Recreation side, we're just over 60%, the national, and that's property tax support. The National Average, NRP, National Recreation and Parks Association did a study in 2023 that showed that average is about 61%. So, we're kind of in line with that. I had some numbers here, a little bit about what, how we come about to that. The other things that we do have, as we talked about, fees for our programs is about 78,000. Our concessions is this concession sales, and that's just Pickard Park. It's almost 54,000. That's one of the things that's gone down. That's another thing that we did cut in the budget, like Councilwoman Zones talked about. We decreased our offerings there, so we just have one person work there, so everybody can get in and out, in and out, in and out. So, you can't even get a hot dog at our ballpark anymore, those kind of things. So, that lowered our concession revenue, but also lowered our expenses and staff much more than what the revenue loss was. Sponsorships, almost $48,000 in sponsorships, like we talked about. Rentals for our facilities, about 47,000. Donations, about 20,000. Hotel tax, hotel motel tax, about 25,000, and then reimbursements for some of our services that we get is about 13,000. So, we have somewhere, almost $300,000 worth of fees in other revenue sources besides property tax.
Question on the hotel motel, the 25,000 that you get, that is a requirement. Is that correct?
Not a requirement. It's just a, it's a policy that has happened for the past, I don't know, five years or so. It's at least that we decreased.
Was it's more internal?
It's staff decides that, Council decides that in their priorities every year.
Got it. Thank you. I just want to commend you and your staff for everything you do. Every time I'm in there, it's a positive, welcoming environment, and that's what I hear from the community, too. I know that budget season and everything has made things challenging, but I don't see those challenging times show through, so job well done.
Yeah, we don't like to say no, but we have to say more of that, unfortunately.
Yeah, but your staff is still welcoming and community. I've always heard great things, so thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks.
I would highly recommend to any of you that have time on a Friday afternoon to talk to Jamie about calling bingo, because it is an absolute hoot.
Might get a treat, too.
Well, you might, if you're lucky, and you call the right numbers.
Right.
Yeah.
If there's any more questions on that, we can move on to the Aquatic Center.
Yeah, let's go on to that one. Sorry I was heavy on that.
No, you're good. And even along that line, so the pool, property tax was about 60,000, 63,000 last fiscal year. We budgeted for a lot less than that this year. So, that's about 20% of the overall fees collected for that facility. So, again, the departments usually combine all of those, so that has a definite effect on what our overall, if we were to take all recreation facilities in mind and combine all three of those budgets, it'll look different. So, that number. But total attendance at the Aquatic Center, I know is down from the year before, but it's still 357 people per day when we're open. So, it's, if you go there and at about 1:30, it's usually extremely crazy busy, right? And having a really good fun time. Season pass admissions is almost 14,000. As one of the things we went through, kind of delved into the numbers a little bit more today. In 2025, we did change from family passes as an option to only individual passes for lots of reasons. The biggest reason for that was for customer service. People were telling us they got tired enough and come to our office or call to get their pool passes, so we could get them able to do that online. Problem with doing them online is people can create their own families and add more people and add all kinds of things to their families, so you'd have four houses on one family that we couldn't catch. So, we would not allow that online. So, in able to do that, we just eliminated all family passes, so everybody's an individual. That did increase our total number of season passes this year, but people use them less than they did in the past, which kind of doesn't, we're trying to figure that one out. But that's been a trend. You know, I looked from 2021, 22, 23, 24, 25, people use their pass less than they did. So, last year was 17 and a half times. In 2021, it was 26 times. Now, they're down to 13. So, it's one of those things we got to figure out why people aren't using them as much. I know they're busy. All kinds of reasons come into that. We knew, we thought daily admissions would increase, and they did a little bit, because people wouldn't buy as many passes, because they would maybe not put dad on their pass or some, one of their older kids that might not go as many times. So, they would, so they came more daily admissions. The only problem with putting that on people on daily admissions is we're at the mercy of Mother Nature then. So, if we get a bunch of cold days or rainy days, or the forecast is really bad, people don't come. So, that's why we want, we're kind of fighting, we want a pass, we want daily admissions, but we really need that revenue. Other admissions, so those are those other, those is two and unders in US, in US today? Why the two and unders were increased? I think it was by 400 more admissions per year by two, people two and under. Before, you could add your two-year-old that what does get in the pool for free, but has to pay for splash time. You could add them for $10 a person. Well, now you have to have a person, you're going to pay a $70 pass for a two-year-old that might only go to splash time 10 times at $2.50 a piece. So, they did the math, and I'm not going to buy a pool pass for my two-year-old. So, that's why the daily admissions on the two and under went way up. And then programs and events. We have a lot of events, a lot of activities that we do beyond just open swim time, swim lessons. And swim lessons are extremely important and extremely vital for our community, so kids learn how to swim, but also many other events and activities that kids can do at the pool. As we said, there was 1,021 season passes that were sold, and in 2024, there was 938. So, it did increase a little bit. And we talked about how we did change to individual passes last year. The next part is a little bit about the financial side of the Aquatic Center. And keep in mind that that report in there is for the season year, it's not the fiscal year. So, if you look at the 2025 fiscal year, it'll be a little bit different, the total numbers. If you look at the fiscal year, we were like 19,000 in the black, so that was good. But for the season year, we had about $34,000 revenue that you were talking about was in the black. Went back in time for the 25 years of the Aquatic Center, and it's been in the red 15 times and in the black 10 times. So, it's hit or miss. And I think we were like five years in a row being in the red, so that's good. It's kind of a caveat to that is, though, that we took out a lot of our capital projects, which were always in operation budget, so that's going to have a negative impact. So, we took out the features that we needed to redo. We took out the yellow slide pump that we're always on the kind of, okay, as long as it hasn't break, we're okay. We do need to add things, and those are all just going to compound on top of each other if we don't handle those in the future. So, that was one of your questions, was what about the future, and so on and so forth. That's one of the reasons why the expenses are down, is because we took out all those capital items. So, you can see a little bit on here, the season pass revenue. It's trended up for a couple of years and then back down again, like we thought it would this year, because everybody kind of made their decision on whether they wanted to have everybody in their family as an individual pass or not. And you kind of see the daily admissions kind of trend. We did increase daily admissions from last year like we thought we would. We just wanted it to be much higher than that if we could have.
Doug, of the things that you were not able to do, do you have a priority on them?
All of them?
I'm not asking you to do it right now. I'm just saying, if, do you have in your mind which things? I figured you did. You know what thing could break before the pool?
It's outside right now, so everything could break.
Yeah.
But anyways, no, I know what you mean.
That would shut things down.
Yeah. Ultimately, safety is most important. So, that's usually the first priority, is all the things that will affect patron safety immediately. And then we start working on mechanicals. Of course, patron safety is health and fitness of the water, disinfection and all those. So, that's all the circuit pumps, all the pumps that we have. They're all in a long list of things that need to be continually updated, so we can ensure the safety of people.
Doug, did we find out what caused some of the leakage that we had this last year? I know we did, but is it something that's going to be continual? Or you think we got that problem, knock on wood, yeah, I get it.
We did find a valve that was leaking at the bottom of a, like, three-foot pit. It's closed off. That feature doesn't work anymore. But we're not going to dig up that side of the pool for that. So, knock on wood.
Was anything structural, though, from the standpoint of the pool itself or anyone?
It was a PVC pipe that cracked.
And thanks for touching on the individual passes, too, because that's one of the things that emailed you about as well, because, you know, it's a big bump, and there was a reason you did it, and...
Yep. There was, there was a lot of people that decided to maybe try other places, and I know Adventureland had a really big special all summer, end of the summer. So, people were kind of weighing on whether they wanted to do Adventureland versus here. We've, you know, this is what our expenses are. We know this is the things that we have to do to take care of the pool that needs revenue. Kind of our choices, property tax or fees. That's that argument, that discussion, that trend, and what our resources are and what we can do. So, it's kind of important for the community members to invest in it through fees.
It's the way it's always been, too, and we just have to make it happen. Hopefully, the weather holds.
We wanted 95 degrees all summer long, yes.
You find out how much people appreciate the pool when the pool has to close early for some reason. But I will say that the staff does a great job of trying to keep the pool open. And that even goes back to the community. You know, if there, I don't know what the number, the threshold is for keeping it open, but if there aren't enough people there to justify it being open.
15. If there's less than 15 people for an hour, then we close it. If the weather temperature is too low, we don't open, things like that.
Right.
Yep. Which brings me to my next, my last slide here, as I say, save the best for last, right? But our staff is, I mean, again, the Aquatic Center couldn't be open without our staff. Obviously, they need to man that and be there and be in all their stations. But for us, focus on training and trying to make sure we ensure the safety of people. So, we have 41 staff there, but at the same time, six of them, the seasonal staff, are certified lifeguard instructors, so they have to go through Red Cross training on to be a lifeguard instructor, so they can teach lifeguarding. 12 of them are certified water safety instructors, so they can teach kids how to swim. I can't forget that we do collaborate with IWC and some of their staff. We share both and work in both places. But we use IWC for training in the offseason right now, trying to get people ready, so they're ready to go up and work on the stands right away. We did get a grant through Warren County Philanthropic Partnership for Angel Devices, which really we use for training of our lifeguards and being able to identify people that are struggling in the water, or educate them on what a blind spot is and glare and all kinds of things. So, we can make sure we're in the right places at the right time. We can hopefully be proactive and don't have something happen to somebody. So, training is extremely important to us. We practice and practice and practice. And a lot of people get frustrated when we have a training, we have a victim drill, and we close the pool down for 15 minutes, but it's important and vital that all the people that come to the pool know kind of what happens in case they're ever drowning. They do know how vigilant we are, trying to take care of our residents or visitors. So, again, I just can't, it's a good environment. We have, I think you pointed out, about 45% of the kids come back every year, or the staff come back a year. That's not really normal.
What I found from a lot of sources, the national average is 25% retention rate for seasonal staff, so...
We've been really lucky that we still have them towards August, so we can keep things over. Like, slides are, all the slides are open and all those things. We don't have to close portions of the pool throughout the summer. So, knock on wood, we've been lucky.
And that goes back to the environment that you've created or the culture. You have built in an advancement program where they see that when they come back, they advance through the rank, if you will.
I'll add that the kind of staff that we do have working in there are already leaders to begin with. So, and it creates a struggle for us trying to schedule them. So, they're involved in band and chorus and show choir and every sport and everything else, but they're leaders in what they do. And so, that's what the ones that we end up finding that come here, they're leaders with their home peers, and they're proud of what they're doing. And they also know 80% of the kids that are coming in every day, so that adds a little bit of, hey, these are the ones that, you know, it's my neighbor, it's my friend, it's my aunt, you know, all that kind of stuff. It does help, too. We're proud of that. I don't want to brag about somebody, but they, one of our managers this year just tried to save a life of somebody at college about two weeks ago, doing CPR. So, not to say this happens all the time, right, for you guys and the paramedics, but for a 19-year-old girl to do that, just out of the, and she would have not known how to do that if she didn't go through our training.
Josh, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good. Doug's doing a great job.
Yeah, thanks. Since tomorrow's Veterans Day, I just want to mention the fact that this Memorial Aquatic Center wouldn't have been there in the first place if it wasn't for veterans. So, appreciate their helping.
They get lifetime memberships for free, too.
Yeah.
For veterans.
I think that might, yeah, that's something we need to remind people of, too.
Any other questions from anybody?
Again, I want to echo what I said, the park staff, there's a great staff who often does a great job, and you as well.
It takes an army.
It does.
Takes an army, for sure.
All the kids, I see comments, all the kids who've been associated or worked at the pool, how excited they are to come back, or when they've grown and gone on to other jobs. They refer back to their experience working at the Aquatic Center. All I need to see.
Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
We're going to move on then to discussion regarding tax abatement. I believe this would be Bryce.
Oh, you're good. Sorry, I know you're doing other things. Thank you so much. Good evening, Council. Yeah, so as the mayor just mentioned, we are going to have a conversation, and we are seeking direction regarding tax abatement. The past couple of weeks, if not a couple of months, you know, I had a chance to sit down and look at the study session that was held a couple, maybe before I started regarding this, so we wanted to provide, Council, an update. I've been working with Jackie to kind of present this and put this together, so we're kind of go back and forth as far as modeling and numbers. We also have Michael Maloney with DA Davidson on line. Michael, can you hear us?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. So, if we have any specific questions on, you know, calculations and things like that, I'm sure with us three, we'll be able to find an answer tonight. So, let's dive right into it. So, yeah, so the purpose tonight is to review whether the city should continue, sunset, or modify the residential tax abatement program. And then an objective for us tonight is to ensure that the abatement program aligns with current and future market conditions, our fiscal priorities, and community goals. I wanted to start by giving a little bit of a background on how the tax abatement program came about. It started, I think, back in, I think it was back in the 70s. The Urban Revitalization Act was approved, which essentially established tax exemption programs to encourage development in designated areas by allowing cities to offer property tax exemptions on new or improved properties. That was adopted by Indianola. There have been recent amendments to the program, which narrowed the scope. There used to be something about living quarters when it was originally adopted. We kind of modified that since. We altered the application process as far as when they're accepted, when we deadlines, things like that. And then we also changed eligibility requirements. So, a program that we've had for several years, and we've kind of altered it. I wanted to provide a couple of key points. Obviously, the first item, potential lost revenue, we should be considering. Abatement reduces property tax revenue, which is needed for essential services. I mean, that's kind of what the abatement is, but it also has helped incentivize developers. Another thing I wanted to bring up was the state of Iowa updated the tax abatement. Another thing I wanted to bring up was the state of Iowa updated the tax abatement code in two thousand and twenty-four. So essentially, without getting into it too much. The change requires that school districts are exempt from abatement. So in other words, they get their tax revenue. And this was just altered last year. So we haven't really experienced that yet, but property owners will be noticing. Hey, you were approved for abatement, but now you are going to actually see some taxes as a school revenue is required to be paid. So I put up a little example up there. The school's levy is forty-six percent of the total tax rate. So they're pretty much required to pay half the taxes, even if you get this five-year abatement that we currently offer for a new constructed home. And then that little, I don't want to say discrepancy, but that little change, I guess, could create a little bit of misinformation. Just in the few months I've been here, property owners have actually come to me, regardless of the school process or that change. They've informed me that the application process is a little confusing, you know, what a realtor or developer tells them, a builder tells them. There's a little bit of confusion on who submits the application, when does it get approved, things like that. Sometimes they, you know, a property owner thinks the builder submitted and it doesn't get submitted and they miss out on years. So there can be a little bit of frustration and then a little bit of misinformation as we're going through the process that I've just experienced in the, you know, like I said, in the eight weeks I've been here. Another key point I wanted to mention, there are neighboring communities that are adjusting or limiting or eliminating their residential tax abatement programs. And I talked with these, these communities and it's directly due to House File seven eighteen. Carlisle terminated residential abatement, but they did keep the new, they terminated it for new construction, but they did keep it for improved homes. So that's an option. We can kind of be more strategic in incentivizing people through abatement for renovating existing homes and then just getting rid of it for new construction homes. Norwalk terminated it completely in December of two thousand and twenty-four. And then Indianola is the last remaining community in Warren County that offers residential tax payment.
Where are you going? I got a question for you. So your, your school levy seventeen sixty-nine or a thousand, per thousand or twenty-nine thirty-six a year, is that, is that based on, what amount is that based on?
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
And that's kind of the, the base value that we use throughout all of our calculations. So to be consistent, we just, you know, kind of use that calculation.
Bryce, when you talked to Carlisle, why did they make that distinction between new starts versus existing? What motivated that?
They basically wanted to incentivize people to rehabilitate their properties.
So they felt they probably met their growth in new developments, I'm guessing?
Yeah, they, yeah, they've, you know, and talking with Carlisle and Norwalk and even the county, it was of their opinions and I kind of share a similar belief that abatement doesn't necessarily incentivize builders to come. If we really want to incentivize developers and builders to come, we should directly incentivize the builder rather than the end user, which is a property owner. That's, and that's kind of what I've seen in trends across not just our region, but kind of the country when it comes to abatement. Mayor, did you have another question?
Well, I was going to say, so what you're saying, if I, if I can read between the lines here, is what you're saying is by incentivizing the builder that we do a TIF project or something similar to that, am I correct here? In which we, in which we do the infrastructure, which normally in a, in a development. In the past, we've asked the developer to put in this infrastructure, the streets, the sewer, the water, all of those things. And that cost then gets passed on to the homeowner because they incur that cost. And if I'm reading between the lines, I, I'm getting, getting a nod yes here, that if we did TIFs instead in those things, we could then put in that as a city side and incentivize the developer that way. Theoretically, that theoretically, it could lower the cost of a lot in that particular case, because the cost of a lot to the developer is less overall, if that makes any sense.
Yes, sir. Yep, yep. And I did have a TIF slide near the end and your, all your points are accurate. But yeah, Indianola is the last remaining community in Warren County that offers a residential tax abatement.
Well, I'm not, I just want to make sure we're clear on your comment about incentivizing the developer.
Yes, sir.
Those kinds of things. That's, that's really the only thing I want to make a comment on, not whether it's the right thing, the wrong thing, or anything along that line. Just trying to clarify the question.
Yes, sir. A couple of other key points I wanted to make. Our five-year sliding scale, which is what we offer currently for new construction, could kind of be considered a seven-year abatement, just in the, in the manner in which taxes are collected. When you build a new home, you are, you don't have to pay taxes. For the first two years, you're only paying taxes on the land. So, you know, I just built a new home and when that tax, when I first started, the land was just taxed. So I was paying five, six, seven hundred dollars a year in taxes for the first two years. And then when our tax abatement program starts, it's when the first fully assessed year begins, and that isn't until year three. So you're, so when you hit year three, you're starting that hundred percent tax abatement, then you have five years plus, that two years. So that's kind of what I mean by the point of a five-year sliding scale for new construction. It's kind of like a seven year.
Was that, that's because taxes generally are eighteen months in arrears.
Eighteen to twenty-four months in arrears, yes. And I also think that abatement, there should be some consideration on fairness and equity. It could create an imbalance between existing and new homeowners. We are incentivizing new homeowners to, to live here. Not a lot of applicants are submitting their abatement applications for improvements. This was kind of an opinion that I had. I think it'd be, I think that's why Carlisle kept theirs though, is to, to help the existing housing population invest in their, in their properties. I also think that new homes should be seen as getting benefits of services without having to pay for them. I think that's kind of an equity thing that we should be considering when there's abatement on the table. Again, that's just my opinion as, you know, I've, I've worked in other communities and seen how this impacts just buying and trends and things of that nature. So the last thing that's also very important is that we don't have an alternative residential incentive. Currently, unless city council approves, something like the mayor was mentioning, tax increment financing. On a case-by-case basis, there's no alternative economic development incentive program for residential development. So that's something that should be considered as we're going through this process as well.
One thing I've seen in conferences that I've attended is cities offer tax abatement on, they're focusing on rehabilitation of the older homes. That's, you know, something that. They just don't get a lot of attention. So this is one way to kind of clean up our neighborhoods and also historic homes. You know, we want to keep those around instead of seeing them continue to deteriorate and fall into dilapidated state. So if, if we were to choose to do that.
Absolutely. And then one extra point I wanted to make, going back to fairness and equity. I think it should be mentioned that, you know, we don't know if these homes are being purchased by private citizens or if they're being purchased by rental companies. People could come in, a rental company could come in, purchase this property, benefit from that tax abatement without passing on that savings to our renter in that house. We don't really have, we don't have a mechanism to control that. But they could, and then when the incentive programs are up, when that incentive schedule is over, they sell it to another resident who just. The end goal is the private resident that's going to be invested in the community. We don't necessarily guarantee that that's happening right now. But then with tax increment financing, we can be more strategic. There's more of a compliance component of it where we can say, hey, send us, you know, your receipts and we'll reimburse you for this, this, and this. So we can kind of be more choosy, I guess, in what we're incentivizing. And I have a, again, I have a slide about that later. Wanted to give a side-by-side comparison on metro communities with and without abatement. On the left are communities with residential abatement, and I would mention our note up there. Carlisle, again, is just for renovation and improvements only. It's not for new construction. And then West Des Moines specifically, that's only for annexed properties. So it's existing homes, if you're going to be annexed, and that's just a state code. So they don't really, West Des Moines doesn't really have their own abatement schedule like Indianola or the other communities on the left. It's just an option to incentivize people to be annexed within city limits. And obviously, every municipality has that power or that ability to offer that. And then on the right are communities without residential abatement. So kind of the, the point of the study session tonight is kind of to, to understand or absorb direction from council on where we want to go with the residential tax abatement program. The first option would just be what's currently enacted today, five-year sliding scale, which are the percentages up there. Starts at a hundred percent. So that first year, you're paying zero taxes to the city. Again, you're paying taxes to the, to the school district. But the city's not getting anything and it goes on about a twenty percent decline year over year for five years. Based on other communities, we looked at a five-year alternate schedule, which would start at seventy-five percent, which is, is good because you're not, you're not foregoing all the revenues that first year. You're getting twenty-five percent of the revenues that first year, and then it's a fifteen percent sliding scale over the five years. The, another option would be our three-year sliding scale. Again, this, the percentages align with state annexation codes. You know, I think it's, it's best to use what's, you know, being successful today. And that's kind of what this, that's the only code section that mentions residential tax abatement. So using a three-year sliding scale, seventy-five percent, sixty, forty-five, and then it'd be fully assessed in that fourth year. And then obviously, the other option would be no abatement, terminating the program, and then we would immediately start collecting tax revenue for, for a fully assessed year.
Can you back up just a second?
Yes, sir.
So option two there, you got a five-year alternate with different numbers. Obviously, those can be tweaked. Is that, is this, we're not locked in on any of those. The one, the three-year though, you want to make sure that we align with state annexation code on that, or are those tweakable as well? I guess that's the next.
When it comes to abatement, they are tweakable. The one thing we have to be mindful of is that we just can't do anything more than what's current. So we couldn't do one hundred, one hundred, one hundred, one hundred and ninety. We can't do the base, the max is a one hundred eighty, sixty, forty, twenty.
Right.
So.
I'm thinking different, different scales where you collect some kind of a tax at the beginning.
Yeah, you could do, you know, if we did a three-year sliding scale, you could start at sixty, forty-five, thirty. You can kind of be creative. You know, we get to a point where we're going to be collecting revenue quicker, but we're also providing what could be considered a competitive package when you're looking at other communities in Warren County that don't offer it.
Thank you.
On the, I'm sorry, Bryce, can you go back one more time? So on the, the bottom option, no abatement, we say immediately collect taxes. What you really mean is three years from now. So houses that are, that we, let's say in two thousand and twenty-six, it's really not until two thousand and twenty-nine when we're starting to collect tax.
If we were to terminate it today, we just wouldn't collect, we wouldn't accept any more applications. So those that have been approved in the hopper right now, they would live out their full life and then they would terminate. So if we were to stop it, we could probably start it in twenty-six if that was the case.
But we wouldn't collect actual correct taxes.
It'd be just tax on the land.
It would just be tax, yes, sir. Yep, I see what you're saying. Yeah. And then we did model some other communities. Again, it's kind of hard to see. I apologize. I should have made that text a little bit bigger.
I can't even read them.
So this kind of, this models those options.
I have his glasses, so you got it.
I'm going to have to get some here soon. We modeled the, the options on the previous slide. So that navy blue on the left shows our current, and Jackie may have to come up here and.
Yeah, do you want me to?
Absolutely.
Kind of what we showed last time when we talked about this. So our current model is ten-year tax, over ten years with the hundred eighty, sixty, forty, twenty tax abatement. We would collect four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in taxes over ten years on fifty, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes. If we did the five-year alternate model, we'd increase that, I can't see either, up to five hundred and five thousand dollars. Then if we did the three-year model that Bryce talked about, that's five hundred and thirty-five thousand. And then if we had no model and we were still doing fifty building permits a year with tax abatements, that's six hundred and fifty-two thousand. Now, last time we assumed that if we got rid of the tax abatement program, our building permits would drop twenty percent. And that's this far right here, and that would be five hundred and twenty-two thousand. And so that's why it's actually, the three-year model is actually a little bit more money than this other one where we assume that there's going to be a drop in building permits.
Jackie, and I think something else I wanted to kind of point out was that this is over ten years. When we were looking at the tables and the figures and things like that, obviously, when you're abating property, there's going to be a larger revenue gap between years one and five. Approximately, based on my understanding of the analysis, the city loses approximately fifty-two thousand dollars per year to the general fund because we're at one hundred percent tax abatement. And that's year over year. Obviously, that's going to go down. So year six through ten, we're going to collect that quicker as the properties hit their full assessed value. But we're always approving new applications every year. We're always starting at a hundred percent. You know, we've been, I've been approving applications this year that are going to hit. You know, now fifty-two thousand is going to be abated next year. Fifty-two thousand the year before was abated, the year before that was abated, and that kind of compounds over time. There's no end date. So essentially, you know, because new abatements are approved every year, the city's kind of, they're, they're in this recurring cycle of reduced revenue. So it's, it's preventing it from ever fully realizing the long-term fiscal benefits of the abatement. I think that's something that should be considered as well. And maybe Michael can speak to that a little bit more. We have more questions or maybe even Jackie too. So that's just kind of a trend or analysis that I, I identified that I want to make sure we're aware of. Because it doesn't look like on this over ten years, the numbers don't really seem to be changing that much, but in our short term, they change pretty significantly, which would be that fifty-two thousand dollars in taxable value each year.
Josh, do you have any questions or anything so far?
Oh, Mike.
Well, Josh is on here.
Yeah, I'm good for right now.
Okay.
So we want to show what would happen with just one single home that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Like Bryce mentioned earlier, about three thousand dollars per year is still going to go to the school district because you don't get abatement on the school taxes. About thirteen hundred dollars per year is abated in the city's portion. So with the current abatement over ten years, it's going to be nine thousand dollars that the homeowner would pay. If we had a three-year abatement, they'd pay ten thousand, seven hundred dollars. And then if we had no abatements at all over ten years, they'd pay thirteen thousand. So roughly a difference of four thousand dollars that the homeowner would pay over ten years with our current abatement up to no abatement at all.
And then staff isn't providing any type of specific recommendation tonight. We're, we have it labeled titled that there are considerations. Again, these are the three options. No change, keep the residential tax abatement program the way it is, the five-year sliding scale at a twenty percent depreciation year over year. The second option would be to modify the current schedule of a five-year to either A, a five-year alternate that starts at seventy-five percent. And again, those can be toggled however we want. You can start at a sixty, forty-five, thirty, however council finds appropriate. Would be the five-year alternate abatement program. Modifying the five-year to a three-year sliding, as we've mentioned earlier, which would be starting at seventy-five percent, sixty, forty-five percent again. That was just aligning with state code for consistency purposes. By no means has to follow that. We could do sixty, forty-five, thirty. We can get really creative in that, in how that's administered. Or the last option would be terminating, removing all residential properties from the abatement program. I should have included another bullet down here. We could also kind of do a hybrid of what Carlisle did and, and keep the abatement program for improvements to properties. So we're incentivizing people to, you know, invest and update their, their current existing homes. But then just negating or terminating any type of abatements for new properties. So those are our four options.
Bryce, excuse me. But those homes that are currently existing homes, they've probably been paying full taxes for a number of years. So there is a distinct difference, I think. Am I correct on that because of that?
Yep.
And so let's say you go in, I, my wife and I looked at adding a garage onto our house. Okay, it was about a seventy thousand dollar project, so. The, my home has probably been on the full tax rolls for, well, forever, because it was built in fifty-nine. But if I did that addition, the only part then would be that seventy thousand would have been abated at that point.
It'd just be that, that increased value.
So you're still collecting the full taxes on the residential tax.
And I learned this week, I met with the county auditor and the assessor team over there. And they actually go out there and they will look at those improvements to make sure that that number is accurate. Because right now, applicants are just putting a number on their application and we just have to trust that number. And so one safeguard we have is comparing the building permit valuation, because we charge building permits based on the valuation they're adding. So they should be ideal. They should be identical, I guess. But yeah, it's something that I learned this week as far as how that is valued, so.
Bryce, it's ten percent of the home's valuation rate to qualify for this. So I think that's an important one to call out too, so.
It is.
Not a, you know, I put new carpet in or anything like that.
It's pretty substantial. We, I approved one just this, just last week. They're closing the deck, doing some other exterior improvements. Nice patio, expanding that and. They're closing the deck, doing some other exterior improvements, nice patio, expanding that in a not a whole garage, but like another separate drive aisle parking area. So like there are substantial improvements as Councilman Armstrong mentioned. Um, and then one thing I also wanted to touch base on was an alternative. You know, if the council does decide to, you know, terminate or change the program, I think one thing that we could also look at is tax increment financing specifically for non-LMI housing projects, LMI is for low and moderate income. So by state code, again, this is where we incentivize developers to construct public improvements within priority growth areas. Our comprehensive plan identifies priority growth areas. So we can be strategic on where we want to put these these tax increment financing districts. But it's for market rate housing only. So that's that's the only way that we can incentivize market rate housing is by essentially reimbursing public improvement costs. So that's where I would sit down with our public works director, city engineers, things like that. And we would say, you know, we'll cover the concrete, but maybe not the erosion control methods. And we can be a little bit more strategic again in how we're reimbursing developers. Again, we want to incentivize developers to come build down here. I think that's an appropriate method to do so, and I've had experience in these TIF districts where they have been successful in attracting residential builders. Also, the non-LMI housing component does have an LMI set aside fund, which which can fund attainable housing efforts in several various ways throughout the entire city. So you don't just have to spend those LMI dollars in that TIF district, you can spend them anywhere in the in the city. So kind of a unique component there. And then another main point about residential TIFs. TIF is a two-to-three time multiplier for tax revenue, if you're thinking about it. When you set a tax district, you're collecting all of the taxes within that district, which is thirty-eight dollars per thousand. Where abatement is you're only abating thirteen dollars, the city's levy, you're only abating the city's levy. So thirteen dollars abatement, or we're collecting thirty-eight dollars per thousand to pay down bonds, rebates, whatever the incentive in the development agreement outlines, comes from that two-to-three time multiplier. And then obviously, it just gives us another tool from the city's perspective, that's part of our incentive tool. But I believe that was it.
If I'm not mistaken, Emerald Bay is written this way. Their development agreement has LMI, an LMI component.
Yes, I did have one more slide that kind of illustrates TIF a little bit better. And I don't want to get in the weeds in this too much. But essentially, what happens is that when we create a district, imagine just a circle in our city, we set a base value. Let's say the area, everything in that circle, hundred thousand dollars. When a developer comes in and starts building improvements within that district, the value of that land goes up. That's that blue line or that blue triangle. That's the incremental value that we're capturing to pay for roads, lights, sidewalks within that specific area. And then when the incentives wear off, we have a future tax base in orange, which is what we're collecting on entirely. And that's the beauty of tax increment financing. And this was for Michael. I really thought that this was a good graphic to use to kind of show that taxes, TIF is not an extra tax on our residents. It doesn't come from anything else, but what the developer puts in that area is what we are using to pay back, like I mentioned, bonds or any other incentive that we're offering within that targeted area. Lot of information. That was my last slide and happy to take any questions or comments.
I think.
First, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I'm just gonna say, I think the first thing we probably, well, we can discuss things. But I guess the first thought would be kind of where we are in the three options. And then kind of move whether or not you want to do some of the other things depending on where we are in that first set of options. I mean, if we're going to just leave it where it is, then I think that I think the discussion needs to be, are we are we really considering changes here? And that's the next next step.
Can I ask my question before we?
Go right ahead.
I think because I think it it kind of applies to how how we move forward. But when we had the discussion last time, Bryce, we were we kind of came up with the number of six thousand per year. It's kind of what we were missing out on. And as we go through this information, we're seeing fifty-two thousand dollars that we're missing out on per year. Which is a significant difference, right? Is 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 the fifty-two number, is that including the amount that would be penalized for House File seven eighteen? It's not?
No, sir. And I did have a table of of the analysis. I didn't want to show it tonight, but I do have it hidden on the PowerPoint if you want to take a look at it. And maybe Michael can provide a little bit more insight into that. The reason why there's such a substantial difference is that in the short term of those years, one through five, when you're when you're collecting no revenue compared to what you could be collecting, that hundred percent, there's a fifty-two thousand dollar difference there. But then in year six through ten again, you know, when that hits full assessed value, that's kind of where, you know, over ten years, it looks great. But we're never really truly hitting that ten year because we're always approving new applications year over year. And so I think that's something that doesn't really show up on the graph or the the analysis of it because that's just one snapshot in time. We have to consider what's going to happen next year and the year after that when we're approving another fifty houses with a hundred percent abatement. I I does that answer your question?
It sure does. I appreciate it, thank you.
It's in my mind, in order to make a decision collectively, we need to know what our goals are for growth and development. And I don't know that we know that. Because that what we do with abatement is going to alter that.
I argue that it probably doesn't because there's nobody else in the county doing it. And the ones doing it have different things. Des Moines. Look at that budget. I mean, Ames, same thing, Altoona has a massive casino to help them out. You know, West Des Moines is only the annexed. All the other thing, the without. Those are really more of us and kind of what our community is. So I really, you know, I said it in our last, the last time, I don't think it was really going to hurt us. We're the last ones doing it.
What are the objectives that we're trying to achieve through this?
Capture the revenue, right? Capture the revenue. You know, the state has basically said if you grow more than three percent on your taxable valuation, which includes abatement, right? It's not excluding it, it's including it. Here's a penalty. So if we're going to get penalized for growing, let's capture the revenue.
That's our only objective, the decision's really easy.
I would agree. I mean, I I share a lot of the opinions that Bryce does. I would I would actually do his new fourth option of, you know, the Carlisle, you know, keep the renovation improvement on there and incentivize people for, you know, doing an enclosed porch, building on a garage and getting rid of the abatement. Empowering Bryce to look at the TIF stuff. You know, I think that could reap a lot of benefit for the community and our budget and the ability to capture revenue. So that would be my direction.
Well, there's been an argument made by some that do we keep builders that are currently here if we don't offer some kind of an abatement? I'm just throwing this out, I'm not taking a side. And that's I think that's kind of, if I'm not mistaken, maybe that's some of the reason why alternatives are shown here. But the interesting point with all of this is that I don't know if you maybe all haven't heard, I just found out this last at the end of last week that the rollback is going to drop another two percent. So from forty-six to forty-four percent, so you immediately get a two percent cut in in our tax revenue right away there. And the other thing I think, too, is that a lot of folks, back to Bryce's point, with the new change in legislation, as houses come on tax abatement, they're going to get that bill for twenty-nine hundred dollars or whatever it is because that's the school portion. And I can tell you right now, there's going to be some folks in here wanting to know why we're taxing them for with the tax abatement. I think that's just a that's just going to happen because they don't understand that perspective that that's law has been changed by the state legislature. I just think there's some there's some things. Oh, I did want to mention one other thing, too. Altoona, Bryce, correct me if I'm wrong. What Altoona does is take seventy-five thousand right off the top of the value of the home, if I'm not mistaken, and that's their tax abatement. That's that's and it doesn't change if I'm not mistaken.
I think so.
Yeah.
I'm not entirely sure.
That sounds right. Didn't we talk about that before?
I thought we did.
Remember?
There are alternatives to it. I know I was speaking with Newton and they they actually offer and what they offer us, too, is just down payment assistance, seventy-five hundred dollars to ten thousand dollars. And those are just in targeted areas. So there's other ways to, you know, attract home builders and new buyers and things like that. But yeah, I'm not entirely specific.
You know, I I just got to think, though, the two playing into all of this is is the interest rates, what the current interest rate, whether it's they're high, low, whatever they happen to be for those particular years and and the economy. I think I think we could have a great abatement program. I think you offer a pretty, we offer a pretty much of a Cadillac program right now, and it's going right great. But things have been good for the last few years. But housing starts and housing sales have declined here recently, last few months, month, year on year and month on month. And so, you know, there might be arguments, wow, you did this, did away with this. And if we do do away with it, and that's why the the housing market's gone to pot and Indianola. And I'm I I think it's more than just abatement. I think it's more of the the economy, too, but that's my own opinion.
If you look at.
Go ahead, Josh.
Oh, it's Michael. I was just.
Oh, I'm sorry, Michael. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I'll try to speak slowly. The two elements in Altoona, and this goes back to the control element Bryce mentioned for TIF. So this is abatement, but the abatement in Altoona is on seventy-five thousand, the first seventy-five thousand, that's new construction or value added. But the properties have to be approved subdivision. So once again, the city of Altoona has put some constraints on where that growth can be. Just wanted to clarify for you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Well, what's your pleasure, folks?
Do you mind if I ask a question?
Go right ahead, jump, jump in, Josh.
Yeah, so I I hear a lot of what's been said and I think there's a lot of great points. It's obviously a very confusing, not confusing, it's an issue you can view from a lot of different perspectives. Our challenge has always been getting builders to build here, right? We are have some unique things that have prevented us from attracting builders regularly. Ultimately, abatement helps the homeowner. But we have to incentivize builders to get here to actually build different products. So if if we have a lot of people telling us, right, realtors and builders and developers, that this is what enables them to build at Indianola, right? Like, are we, I guess it's a two-part question, Bryce. Like, are we really saying that we're the same as Ankeny, Bondurant, Johnston, Norwalk, Polk City, right? Like, pick all those that have dropped it. And like, okay, if if we aren't, how are we going to keep these people developing here? If we get rid of abatement?
Yeah, I think I think if we were to adopt another alternative incentive like TIF, it's it's pretty well known that Indianola doesn't have any type of residential TIFs. And I think if that, you know, through a strategic marketing plan through my office, I think getting that and talking with the major developers in the metro area, they obviously know the benefits of that. And I think that that would be an attractive force for them to come down here. I I think there's also some merit to, again, to the purpose. You know, and talking with other communities, they don't believe that abatement is going to be attracting developers down here. That's just in their experience. Again, it's it's hard to determine that. I think the mayor's right, that it probably is more of a market thing right now. But I think the ultimate goal here is also consider what we could do with fifty-two thousand dollars per year. The, you know, Doug gave a great presentation on parks, and I think, you know, that's that's a an amenity that many young families and people are looking for. And if we can continue to invest in those great services using these funds, I think that's what's going to drive people here. I think that that's why people come to live in Indianola. I don't think it's just because, hey, I can save a quick buck on my thirteen thou- or thirteen dollars per thousand because I'm still paying the school district. That's just my opinion. I I I think that if we continue to, you know, we, and Councilmember Armstrong mentioned this, too. If you kind of look at it, getting penalized for House File seven eighteen, we're reducing our revenue. But then we're also supposed to, you know, provide services to these new growth areas. So that's kind of a gap that's enlarging it. I think great question about what are our goals? I mean, to provide high-quality services to our residents that are living here. Sure, saving money is great, but you know, I'm a firm believer in you get what you pay for. And if you're not paying for these services and amenities like our great Parks Department, what's the point?
I appreciate.
My opinion.
Yeah, I appreciate all that. I I agree, fifty-two thousand dollars, right? It's a great number. That's assuming that we don't lose sales, right? And that's the top part of this. Like, I know we're putting you in an impossible position, right?
I appreciate that.
If you get your get your crystal ball out, Bryce. So say, say we go down this route, right? And we're like, yep, we're going to bet on us and and this money. You proposed LMI TIF, right? Which is great. But what about all of our other products that like are actually selling and building and developing here that would not qualify for that? How do we not turn that faucet off?
As far as incentivizing them?
Well, I don't know. I mean, their 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 representatives will tell you that tax abatement's a big thing that allows them to do what they're doing on right on on housing products that would not qualify for the LMI. So if we shut this off, we incentivize the LMI, what are we telling these other developers that have been here for years?
So what we can do actually is we would incentivize non-LMI housing, market rate housing. The only way we can incentivize market rate housing, though, is by reimbursing public improvements. We can't give them direct grants or any other type of incentive. It has to go strictly to a public purpose, which would be the public infrastructure extensions. So we could incentivize and provide, like, incentives to those market rate housing. It just has to be in the form of public improvements. Now, we could also do an LMI housing. I think the one over by the high school is actually.
Uh, schoolyard development, yes.
Schoolyard development may be an LMI housing product.
Might be.
So there's there's different, you know, abilities to incentivize different things when you are doing a strictly LMI urban rural area. But we can incentivize non-LMI housing.
No, that's great. I appreciate you answering those questions. The last thing, and then I'll be quiet here, is I do agree with Councilwoman Sones. That was one of the big points I made or or topics the last time we discussed this, that all this is good. But if we don't have an alignment as as leadership here as to whether we want to be growing or not growing, it's hard to pick the right the right structure here. But thank you, Bryce, for everything. Great job.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Bryce, in our current TIF projects that we have, and I know we're going to be renegotiating probably one of them and maybe maybe some others, I don't know. But in the current TIF projects we have, there are housing elements included in some of those TIFs, but not in the TIF district, but not necessarily being TIFed themselves. But though that includes the, I'm just thinking of the ones we've got and the ones that one is being negotiated out on the west end now. That was mostly just, again, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yep, that would just be for the public roads that were going through that.
Right. Yeah.
And I think, you know, there's also some merit to to consider, and I I apologize, I should have put that in there. What Carlisle's doing, I think, is remodel because if you didn't want to open it back up, it want to take a full ordinance approval again. You know, if you already have this abatement program and it just applies to approved properties, you still kind of have that framework at our disposal to amend it quicker. We can do it by a resolution if we, you know, if we wanted to add this back in, let's say, you know, worst case scenario, we decide to take new homes out and it does, we get no homes. I'm not saying that's going to happen again, you know, as Councilman Rabe said, like, I don't have the crystal ball. But if we if that were to happen, we can kind of go back in there and quickly change it if it's existing today. So that's kind of where I was thinking maybe terminating it entirely is not the best approach is we can amend it quicker if we have some shell of something remaining rather than abolishing it completely.
So the shell would be the improvement.
Yes, sir.
And could you do that and still do TIF? Because I I think what Josh and Melissa said, I I agree with as far as we've we've got to know where we're going. Because I, I think what Josh and Melissa said, I, I agree with as far as we've, we gotta know where we're going. As far as growth, is that something we want to do? I, my opinions are we, we want to grow. If we're gonna be talking about tax base here. That's, that's how we're gonna get it. In my opinion. That said. We hadn't talked about this tax increment finance. The last discussion we had. I think there's something, to me, unless I'm misunderstanding this, Bryce, it sounds like we have a little. More control on that as time goes on as well, right?
Yes, sir.
And. If, if it's truly about the developers. And then it's gonna. Be up to them to pass that savings, if you will, on to the consumer. We still have. A little bit more control on that.
Certainly.
In a, in a quicker response way.
Yep, and there's compliant, there's compliance arms that they'll have to submit every year on an annual basis. Um, and making sure that they're meeting those requirements, which is my job, so.
I, I don't think, um. And it's easy to say that the developer's gonna pass that savings on, but chances are they're really not, right? Because. Didn't they reduce the uh tax percentage on multifamily, you know, to, in, in, in the, tenants never really saw.
Right.
Break on that. You know, it's something that Josh had said, said the last time we talked about this. I, I thought about several times, you know, it's, it's, it's. It's easy to shut the spigot off. But it's not so easy to turn it back on. I, I, so I, I, that kind of goes through my head from time to time too, but, you know, knowing that uh. The. Deficit that we're in and, and missing out on. You know, fifty two thousand, granted, we won't see that for. Three more years if we do decide to shut it off, but also knowing that. Uh, what, what the mayor had just stated, you know, a two percent reduction and, and rollback coming, that, that's gonna hurt even more.
One of the things we need to. In order to make sure that we don't lose development oh, in all of this. Going back to, and I know this is crazy, but the, the housing study that we did kind of outlined what we do to market ourselves. Creating our housing story, marketing campaign, and doing things like that to make sure that we're capturing the market and, and still telling our story. Why people should want to build here and live here. Kind of thing.
Yeah, that's one uh initiative in my department. I would like to kind of enhance a little bit as our marketing arm and reaching out. There'd be site selectors or home builders or. People looking to expand their, their companies and things like that. I think that's something that. I'd love to. Improve upon.
What makes us different and unique from other communities and. They, there are a whole slew of things that they outlined there and not saying that we need to do all of them, but. It really did a nice job of um saying what. Would help us grow as a community, even outlined the different TIF districts and focusing on those areas of growth.
They didn't. So if, if, if we, you know, if we were to incentivize by using TIF, but the more we TIF, the less we're able to, to bond, right? Is, is that, is that accurate?
That, that is mine. That's not my answer. Thank you, Michael. Can you please explain that, Michael?
Yeah, how would it limit how much you can bond?
Maybe I can jump in there. I think uh the situation where it could limit how much we can bond. Is if the city were to bond to front the cost of the infrastructure improvements. So if we were to look at putting a new street in. And instead of uh reimbursing the developer who would take on the financial responsibility and instead the city were to. Bond to put the street in and then be reimbursed through TIF, I believe that would count against our bonding capacity. Um, but if we.
That's, that's fair.
Yeah, so, but if we, which I would. I would not encourage that type of use of TIF. I would encourage to use it as a reimbursement tool. So if we were to follow that process, which Michael agrees with me, so that's good. If we go that route, it wouldn't impact our bonding capacity because it would be the developer taking the risk with the uh. Debt service and we would only be reimbursing them through the TIF dollars as they're produced through the incremental value increase.
Yep, and, and two things to think about there. One, all TIF is subject to annual appropriation. So even on some of these smaller infrastructure projects, we've seen communities. Even large ones just choose to keep these as annual appropriation by practice, even if it's not affecting their debt capacity. And debt capacity's top line numbers predicated on the total assessed valuation. So the idea is that. Yes, it might be a little bit of impact early, but you're gonna be increasing your valuation, which will be naturally and organically increasing. Your bonding capacity over the longer term, just from the growth. I understand where you guys are coming from, though.
Okay, to move this forward a little bit, let's, anybody have an idea? I know Steve's kind of throwing an idea out here. You want to re- repeat what you said and then we can.
Yeah.
Work from there, so.
My recommendation would be to. Essentially, Bryce is wanting to do, do uh the Carlisle model, uh where we eliminate tax abatement, but keep it for the improvements only. And then start looking at how to use the TIF to incentivize.
Dev founders.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Agree with that?
Are we good with the ten percent?
Let's get, let me get other comments, just if that's where we want to go, and then we'll figure out what percentages we want. What's the rest of you think?
I was really um. Kind of opposed to doing it at, when they first have these talks, but um. I think I, I've kind of been swayed just, just knowing, seeing some of the data, uh, the, the actual numbers, knowing. You know, we, we do have a, a plan in place to help incentivize developers to keep developing within the community. Instill maybe the possibility of increasing our general.
And I, I was. I don't know how much I was heard, because at that meeting, I think I was remote and it was hard to hear everything, but. I tend to agree with that. I, I think I was the one who was a little more outspoken at our last time we discussed this, but as you look at the numbers. And the notion that the TIF can play a part of this as well as if we do maintain a piece of it for, you know, existing. Uh, in your words, Bryce, I, I think, saying, you know, then if we change our mind a year from now, two years from now. It's an easier mechanism to start back up. It, it's there. I, I like that idea.
Josh?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Hey then, what do you want for numbers on that? You want to go back to that slide?
Yes, sir.
Shows different numbers. So on the. For the um. Residential uh pru- improvements, what kind of a percentage are you looking at?
Bryce, do you think the ten percent is what makes sense? Do you feel it should be higher or lower? I don't know where that ten, the ten percent came from originally. I'm sure there is.
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure.
You're talking about ten percent of the total value of the house, Steve?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Before you get abatement on that.
Yeah.
Improvement.
I'm entirely sure where the ten percent came from, um, maybe just kind of a round number.
Round numbers are nice to work with.
Yes, they are. Uh, that's about, you know, a three hundred fifty thousand dollar house, obviously, you're like at thirty five thousand dollars, so. Pretty substantial improvements, I think. I wouldn't want to go any lower than that.
Do you include pools?
I'd include anything that the assessor.
Charges a fee for?
Yes, sir, yeah.
And so. And that's the question, whether or not the rest of council is okay with a ten percent based start and then the sliding scale. Are you okay with seventy five, sixty, forty five, or you want to go sixty? Forty five, thirty, or?
Oh, mine was just a full, like Carlisle.
Good.
That was what I.
I would stay with that, with the state annexation, I guess, would be my.
Mine was the full Carlisle, the full Carlisle model.
Which is, again, refresh my memory.
Only improvements.
Yeah, no, I'm, I, that's what I'm saying, only.
What, what percentages? A three-year sliding scale on that, is that what you?
They don't have a sliding scale. Carlisle's fully abated on new construction. It's only on improvements for ten percent, which are, we have.
About the ten percent on improvements, do you want?
Oh, I don't.
Three or five years on that?
I don't know what Carlisle goes on there. On the improvement. Scale.
If you do the three-year sliding and just stay aligned with the state. Makes sense to me. Bryce, what, what say you?
Yeah, I think it's always best to be consistent. Trying to identify exactly what Carlisle's was, um, when we adopted that model.
I'm hearing three years rather than five. Is that what I'm hearing on improvements?
That makes the most sense to me.
Yeah, again, we can get creative with that. Yeah, that seventy five, sixty, forty five would be the one that aligns with the code, or state code.
Man, if I may, uh, Bryce, so the current model that we have is um. For, if they were to do a renovation or a modification, would they get the hundred seventy five, would they follow that same five-year sliding that we have today? If they did a modification?
Yes.
I think maybe just a, a piece of information to consider is that we have a very, a, a more generous sliding scale for renovations and modifications. And hardly anybody's taking advantage of it at present. So I don't know that we would be far behind if we were to keep it at what it's currently at, the hundred seventy five, so on and so forth. And make it more generous if we want to incentivize uh improving our existing neighborhoods, uh, because the simple fact is we just don't have a lot of people taking advantage of it today as it is. So there may not be a strong uh impetus for making it less generous by going to that three-year scale.
Good point. Um, I, I just looked up Carlisle's and they do have a different percentage. If you're residential or commercial.
Yeah, uh, we do have a commercial and industrial abatement program here that is different. Um, it's four-year sliding scale compared to the five-year.
And, but their improvement percentage is fifteen percent on commercial, ten percent on residential.
I did, we really haven't talked about taking it out on commercial, we, abatement.
We did, we did talk about it at the previous study session and the direction was that we were gonna keep. Yeah, the commercial and industrial abatement intact to encourage economic development.
Correct. And I just want to make sure we're not talking about that, taking, doing differently here, so.
But I'd be in favor of keeping the current ten percent valuation and how it is today in place.
Same scale.
Yeah.
What Josh or Jake said?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Want to make sure I understand.
Throwing a lot of things out here, yeah.
Tell me, Jake.
So, so what I'm hearing is. On residential improvements. Five-years scale based on ten percent of the amount, okay? But it's a five-year, right now it's a hundred eighty, sixty, forty, twenty, is that correct?
Twenty percent appreciated.
You will still want to keep that hundred percent, or you want to move it down to seventy five, sixty, forty five, what they got here?
Is that a question?
No, that's a question to these folks.
But I'd say based on what Jake said and what I think I heard Steve say, was we just keep it at the hundred, eighty, sixty, forty, twenty.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
It's not doing much now. What, what's it hurt? Try and keep it there and get people. Prove their neighborhoods.
Direction, gentlemen? Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the ARL Cuyahoga discussion on animal control.
The city has historically partnered with Cuyahoga for animal control services. The current agreement between the city and Cuyahoga was entered in twenty twenty one. Provides that the city will pay Cuyahoga forty five hundred dollars per month for the care and disposal of certain domestic animals. Funding to Cuyahoga was not included in the FY twenty six budget. The city engaged both Animal Ri- uh Rescue League, or ARL. And Cuyahoga to provide limited animal control services. Staff is bringing forward a draft agreement with ARL for animal control services based on previous city council discussion. Key points of the agreement include that the city would pay ARL on a per-animal basis if the holding period is exhausted without reclamation. The city would pay two hundred and twenty-six dollars to ARL per animal based on a seven-day holding period. This amount could be reduced to a hundred and seventy-nine dollars for dogs. If the city adopts a shorter holding period in accordance with ARL's recommendation. And that recommendation is a five-day holding period for dogs and a three-day holding period for cats. The city would not pay ARL if an animal is reclaimed within that holding period. The city would be responsible for transferring and supporting animals to the ARL facility. ARL will provide the city with two chip readers to assist with identifying pet owners and will also provide training up to two times per year on animal handling best practices. The agreement duration is for one year with automatic renewal. Either party can terminate the agreement at any time with sixty days written notice. If the city moves forward with ARL, there will be several follow-up items to include a trap duty release ordinance for cats, internal stray animal policy. And potentially a holding period ordinance, uh, if council desires to align our holding day periods with the ARL recommendation of five days for dogs, three days for cats. Otherwise, we default to that seven-day holding period, which is included in the uh draft agreement. ARL is currently working with Carlisle in situations involving a bite animal, neglect, or dangerous animal without a formal agreement in place. Norwalk has had agreement in place with ARL for many years, with the most recent going into effect in May twenty twenty three. Since uh July of, July one of twenty twenty three, Norwalk has taken a total of three dogs to ARL. And that was at no charge to the city as all owners reclaim their animals within that holding period. The city attorney has reviewed the ARL, ARL agreement and the city staff. We've also engaged Cuyahoga on exploring an update agreement, which is based on a user fee model. Which would be similar to the ARL model, that we would pay on a per-animal fee basis, uh, that's taken there at the city's call to them. Uh, I want to note that in conversation with ARL, the draft agreement is not mutually exclusive, meaning that the city would have the ability to. Implement the ARL agreement and still negotiate a subsequent or supplemental agreement with Cuyahoga, uh, if there were favorable terms, that would be negotiated. Uh, with that, I would turn it over for a city council discussion, and we're happy to answer any questions.
What's your pleasure, folks?
I guess. I'll start by saying I'm not clear on. Who decides? I know. The. Yes, or the number that's thrown out is if the PD calls. Um, for the animal to be picked up or sent to Cuyahoga. Versus it being taken there. I'm not clear on how all that's gonna work.
Well, if we enter an agreement with ARL, we would terminate, I would recommend we terminate our agreement with Cuyahoga, so there would be no animals going to Cuyahoga.
Okay, walk me through how. Community calls the dogs at large. What's gonna happen?
Well, I think that would be partially guided by our stray animal policy that we're working on. Um, I can base it off of what we've heard from Norwalk and how they kind of operate their model. Essentially, if you call the city of Norwalk, uh, to my understanding is that they're gonna tell you that animal control is not a service that we provide. If there's a stray animal in your yard or a stray dog in your yard, they're gonna ask, is it vicious? Is it disappear dangerous? Uh, anything of that nature. If you say no. They're gonna say, well, these animals will typically move on or that they will be uh reclaimed by their owner. Uh, if that changes, if the situation changes. Feel free to give a call back. We can send someone out there. But the root explanation is that Norwalk is gonna explain to the resident that due to budget considerations, animal control is not a service that we provide. We will come out if there's a dangerous animal, um, but more often than not, through social media, um, through time, these animals are gonna be reclaimed or essentially find their home.
So, we've talked about this multiple, multiple, multiple times. I, I'm in favor of, of entering into an agreement with ARL. We talked about budget, budgetary restraints. You know, this is only gonna help. Help reduce some of that, uh, that burden. I agree with Councilman Dalby. I think uh been great work by staff to be creative and. Figure out a solution. This is. Tough and a definite change, but. It is the times that we're in, and I think we're providing a good. Good solution here.
good solution here.
If I may, and I know, I don't wanna put our representatives from Cuyahoga on the spot, but going back to Councilmember Stone's point, that hypothetically, if the city were to terminate the agreement with Cuyahoga, there was a stray animal in someone's yard, if that resident called Cuyahoga to come out, would they be able to have Cuyahoga take that dog at their expense? I guess I think the big change is just who's actually paying for these animals to go somewhere. So I guess maybe in that situation, if a resident called in, there was a dog in their yard, and they wanted Cuyahoga to come get it, could they have that opportunity to call Cuyahoga if they were to fund that at their own expense?
If, who would fund it now, what?
So, to Councilmember Stone's point, so there was a situation, hypothetical, of course, that a resident calls in and says, there's a stray animal in my dog, or, sorry, there's a stray animal in their yard. And the city response is that animal control is not a service that we provide. And we kinda give them the talk that, you know, if it isn't dangerous, you know, monitor it, you know, if it moves on, we'll kinda see. But if that resident wanted more immediate resolution, could that homeowner who has a stray animal in their yard call Cuyahoga and have Cuyahoga pick the dog up, or stray animal up, if they did it at their own expense?
Right, the resident got, resident did it at their own expense?
That's the question, is could that resident pay Cuyahoga directly to pick that animal up if they so chose?
Yeah, I mean, that would probably be an option. We'd have to, we've got a lot to talk about as far as that goes. And I don't know that it'd be real easy for, you know, to get money from someone bringing an animal in. I don't know that that's a real option.
They would have to pay it upfront, probably.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I, I guess I can't see a lot of people wanting to do that, I mean, unless they were really, unless the animal was causing a problem.
I guess I, I don't see, we had two hundred and twenty-three dogs at large last year, and we're just gonna go to a model of letting them run free unless we think they're aggressive or vicious. And then allow the cats to, I mean, Christina Beach ran on the merit of controlling the cat population. And we're gonna allow that to continue to exacerbate and become more of an issue throughout our community. And it sounds like everyone's okay with that. Which, I don't know, I get, clearly, you know where I stand on the issue. I'm not okay with.
I think you have to look at it as, with reduced revenue comes reduced services, and this is, is one of those reduced services.
Man, I, I, I'll be, I won't be the first to probably say that I don't like this as far as feeling like our hand is forced a little bit. But this is one of many, these conversations we're probably gonna be having as far as budget and where we're gonna find those funds. The one piece that stood out to me in some of this, so is continuing to explore, explore fee for pickups with Cuyahoga to maybe extend an agreement and have dual parallel agreements that you referred to. And I don't even know for sure what that's gonna look like or what it means, but I think it would be advantageous to continue to try and explore that. But I do think it, it's something we have to pursue with A R L right now. Mostly because of their lack of ability right now to even house that many animals.
I can speak a little to Councilmember Lanes, you know, how a dual agreement could look. And Rob may be able to provide some insight, but the, the former chief, before he had retired from the organization, had provided some numbers to us that were specifically situations where the police department initiated a call to Cuyahoga to come collect an animal, and that could be for various reasons. I could imagine if there was an animal involved in a, an arrest or something of that nature where we're calling them in, you know, I could see the value of having an agreement with Cuyahoga specifically for non-dangerous, non-bite animals, animals that need a home that is initiated by us as the city. In that sense, the city would be the user, and I think as the user, it's very fair for us to pay a fee for that type of service. If we could work out a similar arrangement where we pay on a per-animal basis to Cuyahoga to take in strays in certain situations, I think that could be beneficial for the entire community. Similarly, if Cuyahoga, and again, I don't wanna speak to their business model, 'cause I know I'm gonna get out of my depth here, but ultimately, if they are taking in strays and things of that nature, hopefully, pet owners are coming to reclaim them, and there would be appropriate fees, I imagine, that could be put in place. That would go to the pet owner. So essentially, there's a kind of this hybrid model of, if the city is the user, if the city initiates the call, I think it's perfectly fair for us to pay a fee for service. And when you model out forty-nine animals that we had called in, in the most recent year, which was a higher number, I think it was about thirty-nine the year before, that would take the city's expense, just using rough math, potentially from fifty-four thousand a year down to ten or so, right? So I think that becomes perhaps a more palatable number for, perhaps for the council, perhaps for the organization, to still provide a, a level of animal control to the community, but certainly see some of those cost savings as well. And I think that's where the, the hybrid model could, could be an appropriate tool. I think the A R L agreement gives us an opportunity to have a place, especially 'cause we did receive a letter from Cuyahoga that they're not interested in dangerous or bite animals, which is fair, that doesn't fit with their model. So at the end of the day, there is value to the A R L agreement, because we do need a place to take those animals in those rare situations. So there will always be value to us in this agreement. But if we can continue to work locally with Cuyahoga in, in other situations, that's mutually advantageous, I think that'd be ideal. And frankly, A R L, in my last conversation, was not only would the agreement allow for that, but they would actually encourage it. So I think there's, these things don't need to be mutually exclusive. I think there's space and opportunity for multiple agreements, serving different purposes.
Jake, if I could ask a question here. I should know this, but the monies that we paid to Cuyahoga in the previous fiscal year, what budget was that in? Where, where'd that come from?
I think it's been, how is it in the police department's budget in the past?
Members of council, Captain Hawkins, yes, to answer your question there, those funds have been deposited through the police budget for the last several years, so through animal control function.
So, when we cut this this year, then that, that, that was cut out of your budget, and is what essentially eliminated the fifty-four thousand that you would have had to pay out of your budget for the Cuyahoga, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so, where are we funding the current monthly payments that we're making to Cuyahoga for the last few months that we've had? Is that still out of your budget, then?
No, mayor, that's been out of our reserves, I believe.
Well, yes, but.
We had to pull out the reserves funds.
So, it is risen out, but it's not part of the police funds?
It's coming out of the police department's funds, that's where it's paid from, but, and we did a budget amendment to have it come out of that, but yes, it is reserved.
But we filled, backfilled the police department's fund with reserves then to make that happen, right?
What we got you up there? Do we have the retrofitting costs and kennel costs? We don't have an exact cost. City Manager Mesky and I did visit and figured about two thousand dollars for expenses related to kennels, protective equipment, grabpoles, things of that nature.
What about the liability? I, I know I asked this question earlier, but liability for we're taking on the transporting of these dogs. Whereas Cuyahoga, we just call them now, and they come get the animal. But the officers are gonna be dealing with these aggressive dogs.
House Member Stone, it's the same as officers addressing unruly suspects that are humans, correct? So it's going to be the same liability that they face in their jobs, day in and day out.
And when Chief Shear was up there, I asked him directly, he said, hey, is the police department okay with this? And he said, yes.
What I think could be beneficial for everybody, not just myself, but for the public and all of that, is like a flowchart of current costs, services provided, estimated costs, services provided, to see just what the difference is, too. Also, just to help other people understand, too, like what Councilwoman Stone's asked tonight of neighbor calls P D, 'cause their neighbor's dog's in their yard again, just with that situat- I, obviously, I wanna type out, like, this is what's going to happen, kinda how you spell it out, Jake, but just seeing, like, that that would not be a service provided, just so we, for me, 'cause like, I'm not opposed to going down this path, I just need to see all the differences better than, maybe I'm seeing it now. And I know I asked a bunch of questions, and I appreciate all the answers, too. But just like fuel costs that we don't expect. You know, what that might roughly look like, and then just seeing, like, all right, here's what we're getting today at this cost, here's what we're gonna get tomorrow at roughly this cost, 'cause it, you know, you gave me like the, the twenty-twenty-four numbers, full-year data, that's the best data, right? Having a full year, since that's what the Cuyahoga contract is. Just to go, hey, like, this really is going to help the budget by X amount.
I think we have to look at what Norwalk, right? Norwalk has spent zero dollars since two thousand and twenty-two on, on, on this approach, and we're spending forty-five hundred dollars a month out of reserves because we can't make up our mind here. I think at some point, we just have to draw a line in the sand and just end this conversation and move forward.
I don't disagree, I think it, it just helps the public get, get on board, it helps the public understand. That's what I wanna do here, is, is help bring them along in the journey, too. I don't, you know, I don't wanna like ice them out of the conversation of, you just cut off all animal control. I want, I just want them to be able to understand it.
Well, I mean, this is, this has been a conversation we've been having since June. So I mean, if the public hasn't been engaged yet, they're not gonna get engaged. So how, how would you like for us to engage the community so that they're aware of this, I guess? I just, I'm just tired of us spending the money that we don't have, you know?
They were sure here in February, right? And as we've had the discussions, we've not had information, right? This is the most information we've ever had, and if they wanna be engaged, they can be engaged. And that's why I want, just a flowchart. Here, here's a flowchart of just, here's the services that we were, what we're getting today at this cost, here's the services tomorrow at this cost, here's the budget savings, you know? Obviously, House File seven eighteen ties our hands. They have that information, if they choose to read it and engage, that's on them. You know, we can't force engagement, but that way, if somebody, you know, is yelling at us, we can be like, here's the information.
Have a communication to refer back to?
You know, yeah, at least we have something to say. We did put something out there to show you the differences between the cost and the services as opposed to, you know, the, my email with questions.
I think another part of this is communicating with those who are affected, Cuyahoga, dispatch. Obviously, P D staff is gonna know all those parties that are gonna be contacted as a result, and how they deal with the calls.
I, if I may.
Go right ahead.
I would also like to point out, a lot of situations, especially when it comes to the vicious animals or animals that end up biting, oftentimes, the owners of those animals are actually extremely cooperative in the transportation piece. So I think, I don't think it would be unreasonable to believe that a lot of the owners that have, are owners of the animals that bite individuals, that have to take them to A R L, a lot of them will end up doing that on their own as opposed to having us do it, 'cause they don't wanna abandon their animal, even though that animal may be, made a mistake. So I think that's in large part, I think maybe that, that's what Norwalk is, is seeing also. You know, and, you know, as a pet owner myself, I can relate to that. If, if one of my dogs bit someone, I would feel personally responsible. I know that's not everyone, but I think a large part of pet owners would feel responsible enough to be like, okay, hey, we need to transport our animal up to A R L for the appropriate holding period. So I, I think that does account for some of maybe the lack of use by other communities with A R L.
Captain, if I may, police department's in, in line with the recommendation here, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, we've had extensive conversations. This is a model that works for us because it handles the, the more serious animals, and it's abiding by what Cuyahoga would like as well, and, and they've made clear that they don't want those types of animals in their facility, or they don't have room for them, or both. And so A R L provides us that opportunity to do it, and as the city manager explained also, this isn't just a mutually exclusive arrangement. We could, if we could come to some kind of arrangement with Cuyahoga for a user fee model, pay like any other customer in the event that we do need to use them for, for whatever purpose. Sometimes we do a search warrant, make an arrest, and there's an animal in the home that nobody can come get. We need to be able to place that animal somewhere. That's a situation that potentially, if we could work out an agreement with Cuyahoga on a per-use basis, just like any other customer, then we could find an adequate solution for that problem.
So if, did you have another question?
No, go ahead, finish, no.
Well, no, I was, I was gonna kinda try to wrap up here, but go ahead if you have some.
That's what I was just gonna ask Steve then, you said a little bit ago, it's not that you're necessarily opposed to this, it's just making.
Awareness, yeah.
Awareness.
'Cause there's a lot of repeat, like, my neighbor's dog's in my yard again stuff that happens, and that's just gonna be a big change for those people.
But I, I guess my point is then, and, and I was the one who had said a couple of months ago, we should have ended it, and you said, not until we have something in place, as far as agreement. I, I would go along with Ron and suggesting we go ahead with this agreement. And if it's about giving direction, and then we ask Jake, Aaron, to figure out a communication, plans, and too extreme of a word for me, but a way to communicate this out, so that it's out there for people. 'Cause putting it out there and having people consume it are two different things. But that way, we can, can, and the current contract, which, if I'm Cuyahoga, I would be looking at us and saying, yeah, I want you to do that, too, so that they know where they're going, and then we can start talking about what the future is. And we can, you know, quit spending forty-five hundred dollars a month just because we're trying to get into the weeds here and let you all deal with the communication and the negotiations, which is what I believe you have been doing.
And Councilmember Lanes, to your point, we can approve the agreement with A R L to get that in place, but we still have to give proper notification to Cuyahoga, which is sixty days. So even if we provide that notification, we've got a sixty-day window for Aaron and staff and I to work on a communication plan and provide information to the public of what this may look like, and then also noting that we have a trap neuter release ordinance that we would be working towards, that'd be another education, communication point, coming back to city council, as well as if we want to look at our holding day periods, which I would recommend based on A R L's recommendation, because ultimately, that does save us money and aligns with best practices.
Josh, do you have any further comments?
No, I covered it earlier, I think this is great. It seems like everyone is aligned, everyone has been along in this whole journey. I would like to stop spending money out of reserves and let staff move this forward, that would be great.
Well, if I'm hearing things correctly, we seem to have a consensus at least to get us to the November seventeenth meeting and approve the A R L contract and go from there.
Forward for city council's consideration.
And work on Steve's request as much as possible for information that he needs to. Anything else before we go to the order, it's not on our agenda, so I will say we're done. Thank you very much, folks.